Before we begin.
Do you want to do the pledge?
I beg your pardon? No, before we begin, I would like to make a statement to the public. Over the last two meetings, I have received criticism for allowing a board member to not wear a mask while in attendance. I don't have the authority as chairperson to mandate enforcement due to the governor's executive order. I personally believe a board member has a responsibility to set an example since we are requiring our students and staffs to wear masks, and I sincerely believe it is a safety measure. And I just wanted to get that out there and clear to answer those who have contacted me, contacted other board members through email and phone calls. So, thank you. Would our student reps please do the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Canelon, do we have any? No, we have first approval of minutes from our August 13th, 2020 meeting.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? May I have a motion for the approval of minutes of our September 3rd, 2020 special meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We next move on to communication from the public. Mr. Canelon, do you have anything?
I am checking now, and I-
I may come back to you?
I can continue to check. I have lots of recent emails. I do not see anything for public communication, but I can continue to check, and then if you would come back, that would be wonderful.
Sure, no problem.
Thank you.
I certainly will do that. I'll go to the communications from Board of Education members. Mr. Bezelski?
Yep. I just want to say that this week has been really exciting, getting the kids back to school and back at it. Definitely a different air in the household. Smiles that I can't seem to wipe off the kids' faces, and, you know, they're excited to be back and see their friends, so I, we're thankful. I did prepare a statement this evening because of the criticism that you spoke of, Mrs. Carmody. And I'll begin. It's short. "It always seems that we are to follow a path of least resistance, to blindly accommodate others at the expense of staying true to ourselves. I sit here at this moment a board member, but my character is made up of being a husband, a dad, a nurse, a small business owner, and the list goes on. I do my best every day to be kind, concerned, helpful, dependable, and above all, a role model to my children. I am responding to those of you who have accused me of not being a role model. During the end of 2019 and into the beginning of 2020, we started talking more about this new virus, that there were concerns that it could potentially be more deadly than what we have ever seen before. As the year was underway, we began to shut down our society. Large swaths of the workforce went home to work. Our teachers were faced with the challenge of trying to engage our youngsters through an electronic device, and the life that we had grown accustomed to had become a skeleton in order to flatten a curve. I was not afforded such an opportunity. For me, it was different. Our healthcare workers speculate that we had been taking care of patients with this new virus since January. Our healthcare system was on high alert and ready but not sure what to expect. We began seeing patients that had COVID. Some did well, others did not. The CDC changed their minds multiple times during these six months about the proper care of these patients. Some of them adversely caused more issues, others helped tremendously. I constantly had to dawn and off PPE before walking into patient rooms. Even with PPE, I caught the virus. I had to deal with the fact that local and national news assumed that this infection was a death sentence. So now I was sick, at home with my family, trying to figure out what the next step is. All that kept going through my head was the news reports, the patients I had taken care of and how sick they were, the thought that this would end my story. Days began to pass, I started to feel better. I focused on taking care of myself. In just about two weeks, I felt better and went back to work. I continued to see patients and the evolution of how we took care of them. Fast forward to the present, CT went from being ravaged by this virus to having the lowest infection rates in the country. Metrics were set to begin the process of coming back to life, and that would change in the 11th hour. More metrics were set, consultants were hired, we would hit metrics and choose not to follow them because the risk of another wave that may or may not come. Perhaps we helped to save people, but I can tell you from my own experience that there were other demons that came with it. Depression, suicides, people avoiding hospitals for medical treatment, isolation, abuse, and other unforeseen issues. We need to keep pressing on from the shutdown to pick up the pieces. I am choosing to follow the governor's executive order. I wear my mask only when I need to. I wear my mask into this building because I like to talk with people. I take it off when I am seated and spaced appropriately from others. If I need to get up, or when I leave, I put my mask on. Why do I do this? Because I want to model behavior I expect from our students in this town, to follow rules that have arguably helped us make a comeback, to model where we need to be rather than any other form of new normal. Having been hard of hearing as a child and relying on seeing mouths move, being a nurse and having to read nonverbal cues that can help me better take care of patients and help others, that's why it's important to me. I model the behavior I want to see. I also model my expectations of respect even when we disagree, dependability, and kindness, something that seems to be in short supply as of late. We have missed out on a lot of time with our students, my kids seeing their friends and being able to socialize with them as they continue to learn and grow. Distance learning was not a good fit for my family. I am invested in the success of our 2020 to 21 school year. I follow the rules that Mr. Canelon and the administration has set forth when I visit schools, and will continue to follow the governor's order while taking part in public meetings like this to model where we need to be. I would suggest to those that are upset with me, reach out directly next time. Here's to a new school year of perseverance." Thank you.
Any other board members' comments? Mr. Brown?
I have two comments. I hope you can hear through my mask. My glasses get foggy here, but let's see. "I did go to visit some schools this week. On Tuesday, I went to the high school and the middle schools, and that's the basis of some of the things I'm going to say here. I was one who made statements earlier about delaying in-person school for several reasons. However, now that our administrators and staff have worked so hard to prepare and open us as safely as possible, my hope is we can move forward together. We know there will be glitches and bumps in the road, but let us all look at how we can make this work and move forward, not how we can..." I can't see, my glasses are foggy. Let's see. "...not how we can simply criticize and tear down what we are doing. Our Southern educators from the top down have worked so hard, even considered every -- they've considered every possibility and tried to be prepared. Suggestions are always welcome, but please, they should be made in the spirit of moving forward and making this work, educating our students the best way we possibly can, not just academically but also socially and emotionally. If people have ways to make these more successful, great, and please tell us. And thank you to everyone, from the administrators to the teachers to the pares, to the janitors, the calf workers, and maintenance, and security, and the nurses, everyone. Wow, we have such dedicated people doing their best to educate our students. That's it. I was very impressed when I went to the schools." And the second one, I just have a brief statement, and I don't, I hope we don't prolong this discussion, but just why I wear a mask. "I believe our role is to set a positive example for teachers and students. Every legitimate medical and scientific source I read says the number-one way for individuals to prevent potentially spreading COVID to others is by wearing a mask, and we have asked our students and teachers to wear them. I understand the purpose of a mask is more to prevent me from spreading COVID to others than to protect me. I also understand not all those who carry COVID display symptoms. My wife is 73 years old and has had cancer twice. She has other health issues as well and has a compromised immune system. For me to bring home COVID and give it to her would probably kill her. So I live cautiously, not in fear, but cautiously, as most of us do while driving our cars or eating healthfully, among many other things." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Any other board members' comments? No? Mr. Canelon, did you receive any that you would like to share?
I checked the past two days, and we do not have anything for public comment. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Next, we have communications from the administration.
Oh, thank you, Mrs. Carmody. So our first order of business tonight is I would like to formally introduce our Director of Personnel Services, Ms. Rebecca Cavalaro. Rebecca, it's our first in-person meeting with us. Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you. I don't know if you wanted to say a few words or not.
Sure. I just wanted to say thank you for having me this evening. I am very happy to be here, and I'm very grateful for this opportunity. I, you know, the past few months that I've been working in central office, I feel very excited and fortunate to be a part of Southington Public Schools, and I look forward to getting to know you and families and administrators and be a part of the community. Thank you.
Nice meeting you and welcome.
You too. Thanks.
You'll have to actually send everyone an email so they can see what your face looks like?
I should have worn the button.
You should have worn the button. Exactly.
Sign the website yet?
Not yet.
Okay, thank you. So we just have a couple of comments. Did you have something that you wanted to add, Ms. Canelo? I believe you did. Go right ahead.
Thank you. I have an announcement this evening, actually, that is both exciting and scary news to share. It's exciting because it is going to be a huge benefit to our families and the community. It's scary because, again, our staff will be preparing for the unknown. But as of Wednesday, September 16th, all meals for all students will be free.
Wow.
USDA has extended what they call their seamless summer option.
That is so wonderful.
This is the waiver that we received in the spring when we began to serve the grab-and-go to all individuals, and they have expanded this through December 31st or until the funding runs out. So we are in the process of gearing up for what we certainly hope is a very large increase in participation to our food service program. We have a press release ready to go out tomorrow. We will be communicating with all of our parents. This option is available to every single individual 18 and under.
Oh, my goodness.
Whether they're enrolled in Southington Public Schools, whether they are preschool age, those individuals can participate in our remote grab-and-go pickup. So the remote grab-and-go pickup will now basically be able to serve our distance learners, our hybrid high school students, as well as a preschool population. And so we would have loved to have been ready to roll this out tomorrow. The news came very late. It came after we told all, encouraged all of our parents to set up their My Payments Plus account and put money on their student accounts. We will still be able to sell à la carte items like snacks and ice cream, so the parents, students will be able to utilize those funds to purchase additional items. But we really want everyone to understand that it's regardless of income limit. This is just come, and we will feed you every single day, breakfast and lunch. So it's quite exciting.
Well, you know, how wonderful is it to get news like that with everything else going on? That is absolutely wonderful. How appreciative we all are.
So just to explain the start for Wednesday, we're submitting our waiver application, but we're automatically qualified because we ran the program in the spring. We need to beef up the orders to get enough food in for next week, and knowing that tomorrow is our first day with all students, we want the students to get used to the protocol of the lines and the process, and having more students in the building tomorrow, the deliveries will come in on Monday, we'll get those ready, and we need to make sure we're staffed appropriately. So we hope people are patient, because it is a scary undertaking of really the unknown and not knowing what our participation will look like. But this really could be a huge boost to the food service program, and we're excited for the community.
Absolutely wonderful. Thank you for sharing that.
You're welcome.
Wonderful. Wonderful.
Can I ask a question about it? And I'm not trying to be Debbie Downer, but I'm assuming there's going to be an increase, obviously, in the number of students who want to take a free lunch.
We hope so.
Right. So that will probably mean additional staff. Can I assume that the grant will cover the additional staff?
So what happens is it's a per-meal fee that we receive back as a reimbursement, essentially. At the elementary level, the reimbursement is actually slightly higher than what we currently get from a full-paid student and the small subsidy we get from the federal government. The high school level, it's a little bit less than what we'd be getting if we were charging for meals. But we're hoping the economies of scale of the increased participation, NIAA is working with the state to see if we can modify our menus a little bit to try to, you know, to make it easier to follow the meal patterns quicker, to get together and bag, and, you know, really, we're hoping that, you know, we have, we have had limited participation in the breakfast program. And knowing now that students can just come and get a free breakfast, many students don't like to eat as soon as they get up, they get on the bus, they're looking to have a midday snack, this really could be a great opportunity. And we're fortunate that with the funding for the additional staffing to help with social distancing with the buses, we can make sure we'll have enough staffing to assist in the cafeteria to make sure it can be a smooth, you know, a smooth operation for breakfast.
No, thank you for sharing such wonderful news.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Canelon, continuing?
One more item, please, Mrs. Carmody, and it's just some comments with regard to the opening of school. The universal feeling between and among teachers and administrators that I spoke to and students that I've spoken to over the course of the last few days was that it was wonderful to be back in school.
I'm sure.
And I have to say, I'd like to go on the record as thanking everyone for all of their hard work. We have numerous staff members, I mean, too numerous to even thank by category, because I'll end up leaving someone out and feel badly about that, but all of our folks have just worked so hard, and every time we received a modification or an adjustment in the recommendations from the state, people went in and adjusted what they were going to do and did it without question. So I really am awfully grateful to all of our staff members, and we do have, you know, some groups that have been working all the way through. Our custodial staff has been nothing short of amazing. Our maintenance staff has been nothing short of amazing. And then as people have come back, I do have to say that I think everyone has really pulled together to, you know, to support one another. So I really appreciate that, and I wanted to go on the record as saying how grateful we are for having so many people work so hard. Ultimately, I think it shows how dedicated people are to providing the very best that we can for the students in this community and do it in a safe way. So it's been very gratifying to see that. I will tell you that I was being lobbied by the elementary administrators this afternoon that the orientation days should become a permanent part of the school calendar.
I've heard that from a few people. That it was very well received.
It did. It did work out quite well, except in at least one school this morning, as the students were arriving, the skies opened up and it was pouring rain.
Yes.
Put a little glitch in the works. But nonetheless, everything seemed to go pretty well, and I believe that finding some places, finding some gaps in some places where we needed to make adjustments over the course of the last few days has been really important. People are very, very anxious to have all the students back in, and I know the high school is anxious, they're going to be going full boat in their hybrid model beginning tomorrow. So all in all, it's been a good opening, certainly different than the last 43 I've spent. But nonetheless, it's been a good opening, and there are an awful lot of people to thank for that. We want to thank all of you for your support as well. I mean, we've had a lot of support from the board, and we really appreciate that moving forward. And that is it for our report this evening. Thank you.
Well, you know, to see the relief on your face and that man in the back of the room, I forgot his name right now. I am just so proud of our system, of all of the people in our system, and I can't wait to hear from the kids to tell us what you think. But I am so glad that you did say, Mr. Canelon, how hard everyone has worked, and we're all sitting here with our hearts just feeling so good right now. I don't know if any board members would like to say something? Zay, I saw your hand.
I just, I had a question for Mr. Canelon, if I may. The elementary, the new elementary school, our remote academy, how did that, how is that going?
Ah, so you're preempting my school update.
Oh, okay. You want to wait till then? I was just curious because-
I'm happy to, no, I'm happy to answer that now, and then we can move past that later on. So our remote learning academy.
Yes.
Apparently is the name that I learned today. I actually met with Mrs. Nichols, Mrs. Lawler, and Mrs. Zepone earlier today to, you know, check on where they were and how they were feeling, and of course, they have really worked hard. We made a big change when we shifted in that direction, and we really felt that that was what was best for students, and they have dedicated a tremendous amount of time to organize, put together class lists, staff, if you will. And they feel pretty good about where they are right now, how they've been providing professional development, both curricular and technologically based to folks coming in, and they're developing a plan to continue doing that, because the hours are a little different, so they'll have some time to continue working with staff and supporting staff. We did run into a little bit of a staffing issue. We had some folks at the last minute decide that they didn't want to do that, so we had to backfill, and we do, we're very appreciative. We have some of our learning specialists who essentially fill, you know, fill the gaps. Now, these are very experienced teachers, so parents and students should actually be very, very pleased that we have that quality. So that's one piece of it, and I will tell you that they put together a very, very nice schedule. There was a device pickup for elementary remote learners on Tuesday. Now, that was at the high school. A little bit of a logistical issue. My admonition to folks was stay away from the high school around 2:00, right?
We heard about the traffic.
We heard about it, yes.
Yeah. Well, I mean, that's just a normal high school traffic. Poor parents who didn't have any, who've never had any high school children, just had elementary children, had no idea, so they were trapped. But nonetheless, it still worked out pretty well. And then there's a meet and greet, which I believe was at DePaulo, and so students were able to come, meet their remote teachers, receive materials that they would need, and that was extremely well-attended. That was today. I believe Mrs. Nichols said she felt like almost all 430 students, or 400-plus students we had, were there with their parents. And tomorrow morning, we have virtual open houses, and so I'm going to bop in the Zoom meetings, because so many people have registered for them. And as you know, we always have wonderful attendance. Our families are so supportive. If you go to an open house, you have to get there early or you're parking a half a mile away to come. You all know that, because you've been there. So the virtual open houses, K and 1 is at 9:00, 2 and 3 is at 10:00, and then 4 and 5 is at 11:00, and those are Zoom meetings. So they asked me to bop in. I'm going to do a little cameo and thank the families for their patience and just talk with them a little bit and let them know that we're there to provide the very best that we can, you know, for their children. So I think that that's coming along, and one of the things we talked about today is that we're going to continue to, we're going to continue to make adjustments. You know, as I said in the most recent communication that I sent out to families and sent out to staff, we don't have the perfect plan. No one has the perfect plan. There isn't a perfect plan. But what we do have is the ability to listen, take in feedback, and continue to make adjustments and continue to make it better. And I think that's exactly the right thing to do, and I, we've, I think we've been, we've been the proverbial slow and steady, if you will, rather than racing ahead, and I still think that's been the right approach. And I know, and so you mentioned Mr. Pepe a while ago. I cannot tell you how many adjustments that high school team made, and the monumental task it is to schedule a high school, set the building up, have it be safe for students, and then try to corral 1,000 high school students. Not an easy task. Sorry, guys. Well, it's not easy. But nonetheless, that's really the, that's really the take on remote learning. I'll also say one thing. Numerous articles that I've read and some of the email streams coming across, there is not one district in the state of Connecticut that's not experiencing some technology-related issues. It's everyone, it's everywhere. You know, we're doing our best to deal with that. We have some really nice support. We have a company, AdNet, that we brought in to help us with the network, stability of the network, et cetera. And our tech team, they, these are just amazing people. In fact, two of them are down the hall still working right now, as we speak. And we had people come in, so this gets off the Remote Learning Academy. Can I digress one minute? We used to have students write papers on what I did on my summer vacation. So if I had to write a paper on what I did on my Labor Day weekend, I can tell you that I shared it with a lot of members of the tech team and some members from AdNet, and we unboxed, put on asset tags, coded, and set up about 370 laptops so that students would have those in their hands. Now, that wasn't the sum total of our order, those were kind of backordered, I think another two dozen or so. I was just telling Brett and Ahmed, I think another two dozen or so came in today, and that means we're probably still waiting for another 90 or so to arrive. And those will get set up, and those will be in the hands of students. But people came in and did that because they wanted the students to have them as soon as possible. And honestly, if we didn't do that, if we didn't pull that team together, it would be weeks, because it is quite a task. They actually allowed me to do some things. They trusted me. Limited capacity. So those are the types of things that happen here, and they happen under the radar. People don't know it, you know, some people do. Mr. Romano was the key holder for the entire weekend. He opened the buildings, and there were multiple buildings, because we also had people in the middle schools and in the elementary schools working on the network, working on the underlying pieces. So when someone says, "I couldn't get on," or, we did have some issues with folks bringing out, you know, their own devices to school, and they couldn't access the SPS Wi-Fi, whereas our school-based devices are already on the network. So there are some issues, we'll work them out. You know, we keep telling people, "Thank you for your patience." Yep, we know about that. We're working on it. So that's going to happen, and it's probably going to happen, you know, a little bit with our remote learners, although these are elementary students. I'm going to guess that we, you know, we'll have some connection issues, but we have three levels of help desk, if you will. So when you go to the help desk part on our website, there's high school, middle school, and there's elementary, and that goes right to one of the techs, and they try to make that a priority when they know that's one of our remote learners especially. So we think we'll continue to get a little better, and I'm feeling pretty good about it. I've felt a little nervous about the whole technology piece. As I said to someone earlier today, this is not something we've been able to practice. So we're embarking, we're essentially implementing something at a scale that we've not had the opportunity to even try before. We haven't had our students since March 13th, Friday, the 13th, as you all recall. So we weren't able to bring it to scale on a, in an incremental way, you know, to try it a class at a time, a floor at a time. Nope. We're just going to, we're just going to have 1,000 devices at the high school and-
Bring them on.
Bring it on, right? So it is, we honestly have done an awful lot of work, you know, over the course of the summer, and we're going to need some continued work. But my point is, we're going to have some lumps and bumps with that and the technology, and we're clearly not going to let that get in our way, and we've talked about contingency plans, you know, for teachers in the, "I can't get in." You know, you get the message from your student, "I can't get in today," so what's that student going to do? And then we'll go in and fix that. So I do think the Remote Learning Academy is going to get off to a good start. I'm looking forward to the virtual open house tomorrow. Should be interesting. I actually, I actually didn't get to the meet and greet today. I think that would have been tremendously interesting for students to come and see the teachers that they're going to now have online. But it was wonderful that those three individuals that I named before put all of that together, and that was all out to families last week, so folks knew what, you know, what to expect, and I'm hoping that families feel pretty good about what they've seen so far. But we'll see. So I hope that answered your question.
It does, because, and the reason I-
It does. Because, and the reason I ask now, today, there was a Cabe webinar with board members from all over the state, two administrators, one from Stanford, one from Glastonbury. They all said the same thing. It was great. The technology portion was the struggle. For every, every board member that spoke, the administrators that spoke, that was a struggle. Because as you said, there's no way to test any of this. And this is even districts that were one-to-one before anything happened, and they still were struggling. So that's why I was curious to see if you had heard anything. So, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. O'Shannon, did you have a comment?
Just a couple of things. So just about the technology, but besides doing what you did in getting there and this never being able to test this and just rolling it out, the stress is on the internet right now. I mean, for those of us that work from home these days, we see it on a daily basis. And you can see these spikes. The students are coming back online. When the distance learning first started, everything came crashing down. Cox was at my house multiple times and the techs were saying, "It's all over the place. Where people are killing the system." And so there are going to be bumps. And like I said last time, there are, Mr. Brown said it tonight, there are going to be bumps in the road. Don't throw stones. Come up with suggestions, be positive. Realize that, you know, these teachers and the staff and the administrators are creating a system that was just never there before. And they're in the middle of doing it now. And, and doing something like, what is it, you know, building the airplane while you're flying kind of thing? That's what they're doing. It's amazing. It's absolutely amazing to me. And I think we owe them. I'm glad you said thank you to, to everybody, which you always do. But I think the thank you also goes to this, this office too. And you guys never say thank you to yourself, of course. But you guys didn't have a summer either. Teachers, the administrators didn't have a summer. You guys didn't either. And so you did a lot of work and you went through a lot of garbage with the state. This changes, that changes, this changes, that changes. And you got a lot of flack for not putting out a final plan early on. Well, you couldn't. You put out a final plan and it changes the next day. So all the feedback I got from people, and I'm sure most everybody here has heard very, very positive things about this. If you started putting out plan after plan after plan, it just would have been a, it would have been a disaster, I think. So kudos. I think you did a great job. The learning, remote learning, the one thing I heard multiple times from multiple elementary teachers is the one thing that was the best thing that this board did was to hire those teachers because they didn't know how they were going to teach a class full of students and a class full of students on here and be able to focus on any of them. You know, I, I know people that do, are doing this in other towns and are being elementary teachers in front of
And they're going crazy.
Students and in front of a computer with students on it.
Very difficult.
They're going nuts. They're going nuts. And I don't know how it's going to be successful. But this, this plan, I think, is, is a fantastic plan and is going to go over really well. And it's, I agree with him. It's probably one of the better things that was done.
I think so.
What you did on your summer vacation, you, you made this plan work. You, Mrs. Donello, Mr. Medancy and the rest of the staff here. So on top of all the thank yous to the teachers and the administrators and custodians and everybody else. And by the way, those schools, you could eat off those floors. They're so darn, darn clean, right? It was amazing to me. Absolutely amazing to me. So thank you too.
Thank you.
Mr. Dernowski.
Just, just to follow on what Zaya had, and you, you were right on the mark. I think everybody should be congratulated for a job well done. Information that I've gotten from a lot of parents, staff members, is the communication. They felt that it was right on target. They didn't like a lot of what they got, but. But the communication was good.
Change is hard.
And I would, I would recommend that if we, we keep that forefront right up in front of the parents, the staff, I think we're going to be fine.
Thank you.
Good, bad or indifferent, I mean, there's only so much we can control. But I think that if we communicate well, I think we're going to be fine.
Yep. Can I just add one thing to that? You know, you, you're absolutely right. It is so important. So we're, we're actually going to have a new tool that's going to make that so much better for families. It's called Parent Square. We don't have it up and running yet. But the way we've done communication with families right now has largely been through School Messenger, you know, our emails, et cetera. Parent Square is a, is a tool like that, which also has an app. We don't, well, there is a School Messenger app, but it's very awkward and difficult to use. Parent Square will allow us to communicate more effectively, quickly. And if memory serves, and Mr. Medancy is, is not here, and if he's watching tonight, he's probably going to cringe if I say the wrong number. A parent can choose to receive the communication in whatever language they want. I believe it's 113 different languages.
Oh, my goodness.
Right? And if, if, if my phone buzzes, that's going to be Mr. Medancy saying, saying I said something wrong. But it, parents, the bottom line is, parents will be able to, to choose to receive that message, whether it's a letter from me, whether it's something from their building principal, in, in the language in which they are most comfortable. So that's really going to be a nice enhancement.
Wonderful.
So we'll, we'll, we'll provide some more information when we, when we do have that up and running. That's one of the, that's one of the new tools that we think is going to have a tremendous advantage with regard to parent and, and student engagement. And we'll be able to do, you know, a demonstration in here. So it's, it's, there were, there were some good things that came out. We, we did try to communicate on a regular basis without burying our parents. You all read the papers or looked at, you know, news every day. There was something literally every single day. We could have sent something out every single day, but after a while, it becomes white noise. And it's, the, the changes, as Mr. O'Shannon said, the changes sometimes came daily. So it, it was really, it was really better, I think, to try to stay a little steady, you know, and keep things calm. But, but thank you for saying that. I think we, we certainly tried to get the right information out to our families in as timely a fashion as we, we could without, without having the, the ups and downs of, of too many changes having, have an impact on that.
Thank you. Does that conclude your report? Or do you have one more thing?
No, that concludes my report. Thank you, Mrs. Carney.
And now we're going to hear from our two seniors.
All right.
To tell us about school. We're so anxious to hear what you have to say.
Well, first and foremost, we're happy to be back.
Oh, I'm sure.
We missed all of you. Unfortunately, Jalissa is unable to be here in person, but she is watching virtually with us. Me and Brett both went to freshman orientation as NHS mentors. We were giving tours to the freshmen. At first, I guess, when we first, like, when we entered the building, it was a shock to us as well. We had to get used to lay out the arrows, the staircases. When giving tours, I know I messed up a couple of times. I was like, wait, that's the wrong way. Got to find the staircase that goes up, not down. But after a while, it was good. The freshmen were good as well. They asked questions when they needed to. If they were confused, they didn't hesitate to ask. Jalissa, we talked to Jalissa earlier today, and she was telling us, she's, since she's doing schooling, she's a remote learner, she was telling us how she had some techno, technology, technology issues. But of course, as expected, that is bound to happen, especially since we've had no, like, test practice or anything like that. Other than that, it was really good for her as well. For me, I went, like, my first day of classes was technically today. And for me, it was good as well. There were some online learners who showed up to classes. And the teachers were good. They talked about, they covered pretty much everything that they needed to cover. And we fully understood everything. And I think almost every teacher talked to the bell today. And there was nothing really that they said that was not necessary. Yeah.
You were happy to be back.
Oh, yeah, of course.
And see your friends and see your teachers, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Just a question. Did you say the online learners showed up in school or they were online on?
Online, online, yeah.
I was curious if they showed up in school, what, what happened?
No, they're online. They're online.
We'd pull up a chair for them.
Well, thank you.
Oh, there's a couple more things. So I just want to go back to what Ahmet was saying about freshman orientation on Tuesday. I had, I'm sure we had different experiences with that. For me, some of the freshmen that were there were definitely nervous and scared. And I, look, I get it. It's given, even on normal circumstances, that's expected. But with everything that's going on and the presentation's in the flow and how we were expected to walk around the school and giving tours, I gave six tours that day. My fever killing me, but you know, it is, it is what it is. It was, it was a lot. So there weren't, for me at least, in my tours, there weren't a lot of questions. I tried to force it out of them. And of course, there were some kids who were ambitious and were like, okay, where's this class? Or where can I find the counseling office? Where's the nurses' office? Or what staircase goes down? And I guess that leads me to my next point, how Ahmet was talking about the maps and hallways. That was, that was like crazy to try and, the first time I looked at that, I was, I was dumbfounded. I was like, this is, wow. But the good thing is, when I got into school, all the arrows on the ground and on the, on the walls, especially on the staircases, were helpful, saying they can go up, you can go down. And I did mess up on some of the freshman orientation tours where I was going. Again, that is given. A couple other things. One of the biggest things that I noticed is, besides everybody being excited and confident to be back, is patience between teachers and students. So I think the teachers were, I mean, it was a first day, but the teachers, teachers were very patient and understanding, especially let's say if someone didn't have a laptop ready, or they were trying to acquaint their stu, their students with the new guidelines, not even guidelines, but class syllabus outline what we're going to be doing in class, how things are going to change, and how everything goes online. And same thing with the students. A lot of my peers and a lot of my friends who were in my classes were, we were calm today. It was, usually on the first day of school, it's like, everybody's like giddy up, like, oh, my God, I get to see all my friends and everybody's back together. But it was, it was a mutual, mutual feeling of, okay, we're going to get through this. We're all confident. We're all ready, ready to rock and roll pretty much for however long we're going to be in school.
All year.
Hopefully, that's, that's the hope. I really hope.
Twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one.
Hey Brett, you know, I, I think of the arrows, you know, when I'm in the grocery store, there's the arrows, and I'm always in the wrong aisle. And it's not funny. And somebody will tap me on the shoulder and say, "Miss, you're going the wrong..." And I, I forget. So I, I'm sure it's, you know, that's going to take time. But it's so good to hear you saying how well it went. They did a great job at the high school. It was the only school I've been in. And just to see the relationships that you're rebuilding with your teachers and your administrators, you're just making me feel so good.
That's good to hear. That's.
All of us, right? I mean, it's just.
Is it making you want to go, go back to teaching?
Yes. I would love, I think Mr. Pepe would love to have me back at the high school. I would be probably his best student on the computer.
Yeah.
But oh, good kids, it's just so great to hear what you had to say. Makes us feel so good. And I would like to be back in the classroom. I really would. Mr. Brown, wouldn't you?
Yeah, I was, I was going to say that the thing I hear coming through, and not, it's not just from you, is, is the word compassion. I think everyone is going to have more compassion because we're all in this together. And it's not easy. But that's a, it's a, sometimes that brings you together. So I'm hoping it's, we're, we're there the whole year and hope everything goes well. And it sounds like a good start. And like Mrs. Carney said, I think the high school, and not just the high school, the other schools too, but they did an incredible job getting prepared and thinking of every contingency. And I got lost in the arrows too. I couldn't figure out how to get, I was no one there. I couldn't still figure out where I wanted to go. I had to go all the way around.
And Bob, we were there for how many years and we got lost, right?
Well, that's true. They also numbered the rooms in a weird way, so.
That's great. Mrs. Clark.
I, I just want to say, I can hear in your voice, you're so glad to be back. You get to see your friends. You get a routine. You get back to the schedule. And I just want you to know, your teachers are glad to be back because they wanted to see you. Because every teacher that I've talked to has said, that's the worst part of all of this, that they don't see their kids, whoever their kids are. Every year, it may be a new group of kids, but I'm just so glad you're being gentle with each other and I hope it continues.
So thank you. Yes, Brett, something else?
Yes, one last thing. First, Mr. Brown, that is definitely the word I was looking for, compassion. With Canvas, yeah, that is great. I know for me, I like to have like a one calendar, one page where everything is condensed so I can see it easily. And having all of my classes moved to Canvas and having that professional development, so teachers are able to make that happen is phenomenal. It's such as like looking at the calendar and everything that I have to do, it's just like satisfying. It's great. So I, I really appreciate the teachers all coming together on that one.
Great to hear that. Thank you. Thank you so much. Really appreciate listening to that report. Thank you, kids. Next, we have the personnel report, correct? Do you have a motion?
Yeah, move to approve the personnel report as submitted.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Old business, town government communication. I don't believe we have any, Mr. Canal and Dewey.
I do not have any, Mrs. Carney, no.
Any board members have any town communications?
No.
No? Okay. Move on to update on the school reopening. Is there more that you wanted to say about that?
That, that was really it, especially after Mr. Medancy's update last week. Thank you.
Moving along to the award of the, you know, you can't put your glasses on when you have a mask because it's all.
I discovered that.
So I can't see. Let's see. The RFP 2020 dash 109, replacement of high school auditorium lighting system. Do we need a motion on this?
Yes.
This, this was tabled, actually.
This was, this was tabled, correct.
Tabled, so we need a motion to.
There was some discussion at our last meeting, not the last meeting, the meeting before that. At the last meeting, Mrs. Donello brought up a lot of the financial information and where we stood. So I'm going to make a motion to approve the RFP 2020 dash 109, replacement of SHS auditorium lighting system to Supertech Inc. in the amount of $241,777.
Second. Any discussion? Mr. Dernowski?
We, we're still in the same positive position of your last statement. There's no surprises on the horizon.
Correct. There's limited, there's been limited change since the report last Thursday.
Okay. Then, good.
Mr. O'Shannon?
I just, I, yeah. And, and I, I think, this is an interesting thing. This is, I think, just to cover a couple of points, this is the original lighting system that was in the system when the school first came into place.
Correct.
So it's, it's an update. It's, it's a safety issue. It's, it's, and we talk a lot about maintaining our buildings and, and bringing in stuff from the inside and outside. If we don't maintain our buildings, they're going to start falling apart. This is falling apart to start at this point. And it's something that if we put into place now, is going to be there hopefully for a very long time for use. But importantly, it's not just extracurricular. It's not just, you know, a play here or an outside event there. This is a co-curricular activity. People, there are events that go on in there that are credit courses. So this is, this is truly a, a classroom expense. And it's something that's going to be able to be utilized for, for a long time, for many, many years. So I think this is one of those things that's, that we do now for the betterment of the school in the long term. So I'm, I'm in favor of moving forward with this.
All right. So we have a, did, or is there another?
I was going to say the same thing Zaya just said. It's not just nice for the community to be able to go in at night and watch a show. This is curriculum.
Curriculum. It is curriculum.
Because classes in there and using it. It's like saying to the science class, sorry, we don't have the equipment for you this year.
And it's been a long time.
Yeah, it's been a long time.
On our list. So it's about time.
I started there.
Can I ask a question? Are the students using the auditorium now?
Yes.
Oh, they are using it?
We're, we're using the auditorium. Actually, we have music classes.
They're all spaced out. They've got the blower things, or the, whatever they call them, mittens on or whatever.
All right. We have a, you have another discussion?
Just, just a, one final thing. You know, I feel comfortable now because I think we've done our due diligence.
Yeah, we have.
Making sure that we're in a proper position financially.
Yeah.
You know, to afford to do this. So.
And we've put it all for so long. You know, this goes way back.
Aside from that, I mean, there's something that needed to be done for many years.
Right.
It was part of our plan. It's still part of the plan. No one thought we were going to end up in the position we are. But financially, I think we're in a very good position. So at least we should get it done and put behind us.
Okay. So we have a motion and we have a second. I'm sorry, Joe, I didn't mean to ignore you.
So I had been pretty vocal last meeting about this as far as being concerned about sending, sending the money to bid, you know, rewarding the bid. I think the fact that we're actually utilizing the space is very important. Then it makes sense that we're, we're going to be making that investment. And then just a quick follow-up to Sheri. So are we currently, what kind of seating are we in now as far as what kind of positive numbers are we looking at where we have sort of a, a slush fund, if you will, as far as being able to, like, as opening goes and everything else?
So really, nothing has changed since our meeting yesterday. So we were, I'm sorry, our meeting, seems like yesterday. Our meeting last Thursday, I apologize. And so we were under the $1.9 million that the board had given the administration, the original authority to, to spend if necessary. And in addition, you know, you heard that we are getting additional grant funds. And then just to remind everybody that the, this expenditure is actually coming from the non-lapsing account from the closeout of the 2019 year. So this is not, the, where these, these funds are currently located are not funds that we have access to for school reopening or our operating budget.
Right.
Any more, Joe?
Thank you.
So I have a motion and a second. And so now I'm going to take, Linda, a roll call on that, please. So I have a motion and a second, and so now I'm going to take, Linda, a roll call on that, please.
Mr. Byszewski?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dernowski?
Yes.
Mr. O'Shannon?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. New business. Once again, I can't read it.
Would you like my little glasses?
No, it's, the glasses fog up with the mask. Ratification of the NIP SEU dash Southington Clerical and Food Service Workers Union Contract.
Make a motion to approve the tentative agreement between the NIP SEU, Southington Clerical and Food Services Workers Union and the Southington Board of Education?
Second.
All those, in favor? Our discussion first. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any objections? All right, before we go to Mr. Dernowski for his favorite, I, I just I, I just
I had another thing I wanted to bring up, but that's okay. Go ahead.
Okay, because I wanted to say one thing before we adjourn. So do you want to go first?
No, you don't want me to adjourn, so.
Rocks, paper, scissors, shoot.
But before we adjourn, I, I, I'm sitting here this evening feeling so relieved. I, 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 I was very anxious about the beginning of our school year. I know all the hard work that everyone did. When I see the kids, the administrators, and the teachers, and their attitude, and the rebuilding of your relationships, it just makes me feel so good. Let us hope that everything continues. Yeah, there's going to be some bumps, but we'll get through it, because we're going to do this together. And our community is going to do this together, because everyone wants us to succeed. So let's keep it up. And I, I'm just so, I just feel so good tonight. And I think we all do, really. So, so everybody, thank you. Everyone out there listening, thank you for all you've done. Mr. Dernowski.
Yeah, there was one item that I wanted to bring up under board members communications, having to do with the high school parking lot. They, they did a very nice job getting it completed, and I think it's going to work out quite well, except for one item. I'm not sure who designed it, but looking, I, I happened to drive through just to take a gander and see the, the workmanship, which looked very good. The problem I see is, come winter time, when that area needs to be plowed, there's, there's two outcrops right in the middle, which means that the snowplow coming in is not going to be able to make one pass. It, it's, it's going to be problematic. So maybe
It's like a peninsula that comes out.
An island, peninsula.
And whoever's plowing it, and I know our contracts have always had a caveat in there that any curb damage the plow company is, was going to be responsible for. I can't see how anybody can plow that without hitting the curb. And that could have an effect on pricing when it comes time to go out for bid.
So if I may, just, that was actually designed in-house by our engineering department. And I'm going to assume, not being an engineer, that there is some purpose for those little, they're not really islands, they're more like peninsulas. We can certainly explore and find out why they're there.
I'd like to find out what, you know, because they look nice, okay? And they, you know, and that's really all they're for. I mean, functionally, it doesn't do anything with the water drainage. You know, that's all been taken care of. But it just gives it a little bit of a a classic look. But functionally, it's, it looks great. We lost two parking spots because of it, but I think the people who need to take care of it with the, you know, plowing of snow, going to have a problem.
Well, that's something that we can certainly ask Jee to go, right?
I don't think we're going to spend money to
No, but I mean, can you ask Mr.?
I'll ask him what the, what the reason is for that, for that design. Sure.
And we'll get back to you on that, okay?
I, I just want to say, I think it's two thousand twenty, so it's probably not going to snow.
Don't count on that.
Now that you announce it to the universe.
How do you scrape Lucas off a parking lot?
So I need a motion. I need a motion.
Most do adjourn.
All in favor?
First, second.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, everyone.